Okay, we got about a minute to go here until till showtime.
Mayor, we are live on YouTube, but it looks like we may be having some trouble with our chat feature.
Okay.
If you don't mind announcing that they can always join us on Zoom and submit public comment there if they're having any trouble over YouTube.
Okay, I do see the Q and A has come up. Uh, but if anyone is having any problems with the chat feature, uh, you can still come in on, uh, uh, the Zoom or the YouTube channels, uh, or also, uh, send it by email, via email.
Not by email at this time, Mayor.
Okay, not this time, okay, but, uh, by, uh, by YouTube or, uh, see if we can get the chat feature back up. Let's see. Oh yeah, see what you mean. But we're still in Q and A, still have those. All right, uh, I see that it is seven o'clock. Yes, please. Good evening and welcome to this, the August 10th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi, here, yes, here.
Councilmember Coomer.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshawn.
Here. Very good, thank you. Uh, due to, uh, feedback and delay from, uh, other meeting platforms, I will be reciting tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, please mute your microphones and follow along at home. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good, thank you very much. Uh, now, uh, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive orders issued by the governor, uh, to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all of the applicable noticing requirements and the public is welcome to participate in this meeting. I'm going to take a few moments to explain the process we'll be using for this meeting. Tonight, we're using the Zoom meeting platform and YouTube. Uh, members of the public can participate by submitting public comments through the YouTube or the Zoom Q and A feature. The Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available on the city of Livermore website and on the agenda. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be submitted per person, per item. Uh, comments should be no more than 500 words. If you submit multiple comments for a single item, the last comment will be read into the record and the remaining comments will be added to the meeting record. The public comment period closes at the conclusion of the comments being read into the record. Items received prior to the meeting using email or the Google form link on the city agenda were provided to the city council and the public as a supplemental packet prior to the meeting and therefore will not be read into the record. However, rest assured that all the council members have read all the comments that were submitted and received in the supplemental packet this afternoon. So with that, we move on to proclamations and presentations. We have the Livermore Area Youth Advisory, uh, Commission annual update. So for that, we have, uh, the, uh, LAIC Chair Madeline Love Doll, uh, and LAIC Commission Member, Denica Bellucci. They will be giving the update tonight. Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Hi, everyone. This is Madeline. I've been the Chair of the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission for over this last year. Um, I was the Vice Chair of the Year previous, and then I was just a Commission Member for two years before that. So I've served two terms, four years on LIAC. If, oh, let me share my screen real quick and you guys. Everyone can see.
There we go.
All right, so Livermore Area Youth Advisor Commission, who I'm talking about right now. Um, basically LIAC was created as a way to engage the youth of the Livermore area um, in politics and the going on of the city and the local leadership. Um, we meet and discuss our, uh, how we would like to, um, advise the city council on different aspects of Livermore and, uh, plan different events for the betterment of our community. Here you can see the information, um, including the liaisons with the city of Livermore, um, where we meet, when we meet, and our members. Um, and then the projects for this, for this year, this term, um, we had the Interfaith Backpack Project. That's in August. That's where we package meals. Um, we've been doing that since before I even joined the Commission. It's an amazing program. Um, we had students come from Tupe to talk about tobacco usage, um, for one of our last meetings. That was very enlightening. Um, this last year, we did something called the, uh, voter registration drive, which Mayor Marshawn actually, actually pushed. Um, but we had a huge success at both high schools, um, in the continuation schools with registering students to vote and the youth of Livermore, um, to pre-register before they're even old enough to vote. And then, of course, the World Cultural Fair, which was a roaring success, uh, last year, and then it was canceled like the day of this year. It's just super, super, super disappointing, but, um, we put a lot of work into it and I'm sure we will when we're able to again. Um, but the World Cultural Fair is basically the event that we had at the Bankhead where the youth of Livermore were able to come in, in, in Livermore area. But we had, I think, over, uh, I don't remember the numbers that well anymore, but I think 200 people who attended. And, um, it was, it was awesome. Performers from each region. We had info booths and passports. Um, yeah, and then right there you can see our mission statement. So yeah, thank you for your time. That is LIAC. It's what we do.
Well, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, do we have questions for, uh, Ms. Love Doll or Bellucci?
I, I've got no questions, but I just, I, I love the spirit of the LAIC members and, uh, and, uh, every time you, you meet so many cool kids when you have to get the interview through these, this commission and it's, uh, it's amazing to see. It makes me feel a lot more comfortable as I retire and you know, that you're out there doing good stuff for us and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate your comments so much. We're very excited to get forward with projects for the next year when things can open. But thank you, council members, for your support and advice. We really appreciate it as a commission.
Well, certainly. Thank you. Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, thank you for what you do, and I've always enjoyed the, uh, opportunity I had to interview the candidates for the commission. Uh, one thing I'd like to, uh, put an advertisement, uh, for you guys to consider this coming years. We have the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. And we're going to have a working group and then that working group is going to be tackling various projects. And one of the keys that we know to make, uh, the whole effort, uh, successful is working with the, uh, students and education. So I just want to toss that out for you guys to consider figuring out a way to maybe help in the coming year. So that's just a little public service announcement and thank you for what you guys do.
All right, Commission Member Bellucci, and I will bring that to the council.
That's terrific. Good. Uh, Councilmember Monroe.
Right, and, uh, so Vice Mayor Warner beat me to the punch there, so way to go. Um, I would also like to do a plug for, uh, anything you can do to help with the census at this point. Um, we're working really hard, uh, to make sure that we have that taken care of. Um, so reaching out to anyone you know to, to help with that, that would also be deeply appreciated. Um, and I will also just give a shout out. You guys do wonderful work. I was at the, uh, World Fair in 2019. It was great. Um, I'm so sorry it got canceled and look forward to it when we can all meet again in person.
Thanks again, yeah.
Well, great. Uh, Councilmember, uh, Monroe beat me to the punch on that, but, but certainly we need help with the census. Uh, that was a great effort you had to get the vote out. I certainly appreciated, uh, a couple of years ago, you worked with, uh, with me on the anti-bullying campaign, which I thought was very successful as well. Uh, the Youth Advisory Commission is the most diverse commission that we have in the city of Livermore. So I think that's going to be absolutely key as we reach out to the community, as the Vice Mayor pointed out. Uh, we need your input and we also need, uh, your ties with the community to continue to get this information out to the community and at the same time, uh, bring more information and insights back into the, uh, into the council. So certainly appreciate, uh, all the great work that you're doing and that you will continue to do. Uh, again, look forward to, uh, next year and the, uh, the World's Fair. Uh, and, uh, thank you again. Uh, thanks you, thanks for your report.
Yeah, I'll make sure to bring all of this to my commission. Thank you guys for your time.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Tambra Mala and Lynn Gardner, uh, thanks for all your great efforts on this as well. Okay, uh, with that, uh, let's move on to, uh, I believe we are up to Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the, uh, agenda. The city council can neither deliberate nor take action on any of these. Uh, but, uh, certainly appreciate your comments. And with that, I will, uh, ask the city clerk, are there any comments for, uh, Citizens Forum?
Mayor, there were no comments received over Zoom. City Clerk's office, can you please read comments received over YouTube?
Yes, we have received one. Moni Knapp, thanks to all the youth for volunteering their time and giving back to our community. And that concludes the YouTube comments.
Very good. That's based on our 2.01. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and, uh, bring it back to the council for our consent calendar. Uh, does anyone wish to pull any items, uh, from the consent calendar for consideration or discussion?
I'd like to pull 4.02.
4.02, okay. Uh, let me get up to, there we go, okay, 4.02, uh, is there anyone else that wishes to pull any other item for discussion? Okay, what I'd like to do is entertain a motion for, uh, 4.01 through, uh, uh, 4.09. Uh, holding out 4.02 for discussion. Uh, do you have a motion for 4.01, 4.03 to 4.09?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Coomer, uh, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, on, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, 4.02, we did receive a number of comments earlier today on 4.02 from Joanne Morrison, uh, Tatiana and Adriana Del Sid, uh, and Hillary, uh, Kojonjian. So, uh, we did receive those comments, uh, and I'd like to bring them to the council for, uh, uh, discussion.
Do we have any other comments?
I got discussion first, I'm sorry. Uh, let's go for staff report first and then, uh, have questions from the council.
Very good. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council. This is Jason Alcoa, your city attorney. Uh, before you this evening are two ordinances that are falling through on direction that the council provided previously to staff. Um, to begin, uh, last year, the city council adopted an ordinance to license tobacco retailers in the city of Livermore. That ordinance has a prohibition that bans the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city. Uh, when that ordinance was first adopted last summer, the city council gave direction to staff to craft an exemption to allow the sale of premium flavored tobacco products. Uh, but that was done on a piecemeal basis. Essentially, you adopted the ordinance to have the prohibition, then gave staff the direction to return at a later date with an exemption for your consideration. Uh, we had begun working on that, then a couple of things happened. First, the amendments, the work on the amendments was halted when the initiative, and the, um, ordinance was subject to a referendum. Uh, that referendum was ultimately withdrawn in December and the ordinance went into effect, uh, with enforcement commencing in January. Uh, staff returned to the city council in March with an ordinance for a potential, um, exemption for the sale of premium flavored tobacco products. At that time, the city council received a number of comments from the, from the community and directed staff to, again, proceed with the exemption piecemeal, but again, return with a more comprehensive ordinance that had a dozen, uh, additional requirements for the exemption. That imposed, one, limit the number of licenses, two, impose operational requirements, three, establish a minimum price per cigar, and four, limit the exemption, um, for a tobacco premium flavored tobacco license tag to the only those businesses that are exclusively selling tobacco products and tobacco paraphernalia. So we returned, uh, at that time in March, now it's a direction given to staff by council. We returned in April. Uh, we would return sooner, but as you'll recall, that's when COVID-19 shelter in place order hit. But we did return to you in April, uh, with an ordinance that had, um, those conditions, not those conditions that you just gave direction, but rather the second reading of the premium. At that time, rather than proceed on a piecemeal basis, the city council then directed saying, uh, with the basis that since COVID-19 had required everybody to shelter in place and businesses were shuttered, rather than proceed piecemeal, to again, go back to the table, retool the ordinance to have a more comprehensive ordinance that had those additional changes in operational requirements for the, um, sale of flavored premium tobacco products and return together with, uh, those items to you at a later date. What you have before you are two different ordinances. One, uh, an ordinance to exempt premium flavored tobacco products from the prohibition against the sale of flavored tobacco products. And that includes the provisions identified by you back in March, um, based on the materials that you had received. In addition, when we were before you in March, uh, we also requested the city council consider and give direction to us, uh, whether to adopt another ordinance that prohibited the sale of CBD electronic smoking devices and CBD electronic smoking device fluid. What the enforcement staff had discovered when they're implementing the tobacco retail license was a proliferation of alternative electronic smoking devices filling the void as the tobacco, um, fluids and vaping devices were being removed from the shelves. Um, those seem to be, those, uh, were equally as attractive to youth. Um, and at that point, we requested direction whether you wanted to entertain a prohibition for those products. In March, you gave us that direction. So that's why you see the second ordinance before you this evening, which is an ordinance to prohibit the sale of CBD electronic smoking devices and electronic smoking device fluid. Uh, the ordinances being for you this evening can be acted on either, uh, separately or together. That means you can, uh, consider one ordinance and determine whether the council wants to approve or, uh, reject that particular ordinance. And then you can pick up the second ordinance and again, have that conversation whether you want to, uh, adopt the CBD prohibition or to reject that. Uh, that concludes my staff's presentation and I'm available for questions.
Any question for the city attorney at this point? Uh, Vice Mayor Warner.
Wanted to ask, make sure I understand, with respect to the premium tobacco, uh, is, is it, uh, more or less difficult to enforce the ordinance with an exemption for premium tobacco?
With regard to enforcement, if you were to create an exemption for certain flavored tobacco products, that would, um, increase enforcement challenges. We now like, not only have to identify which are flavored premium tobacco, flavored tobacco products, but then also make a subcategory of what are premium flavored tobacco products. Uh, so yes, uh, an exemption would make enforcement more challenging.
Do we have any, um, data on how the enforcement's been going so far with what we have?
I will, I believe we have Sergeant Mayer, uh, with us this evening as well. Um, my understanding is enforcement has gone fairly well relative to the removal of the prohibitive products being, um, electronic smoking devices and flavored, uh, tobacco products, but I will turn that over to Paul if he's available to, uh, answer questions.
Yes, I am available. Yes, thanks. Uh, enforcement has gone really well. We visited each tobacco retail establishment twice. The first time with the intention of, um, providing education on what is and what is against the ordinance and the second as more of a formal inspection. And I could say that we're about 98% uh, compliant with our flavored tobacco and vaping products so far.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions at this point, uh, for staff? Okay, seeing no staff, uh, questions, uh, going to, uh, open up the public hearing for, uh, 4.02. As I mentioned, we've already received a number of comments, uh, that we have read and considered. Uh, at that point, uh, I'll hand this over to the city clerk. Do we have any additional comments on 4.02?
Mayor, we have received several comments over Zoom. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
This first comment's from Mark Goodman. "The definitions of premium tobacco products are well crafted to exclude the products that are intended for other uses. The $12 price point for premium cigars and pipe tobaccos is unnecessarily high in that the products are defined as handmade, 100% tobacco leaves, minimum weight, et cetera. There are many premium flavored cigars that are retail below $12 each, and there are almost no premium pipe tobaccos that sell for $12 an ounce. The average price of a premium flavored cigar is $6 to $7, and the average price of premium pipe tobacco is $5 an ounce. The $12 minimum price would make these products grossly overpriced and be unfair to our consumers and that they would be forced to overpay and seek other ways to purchase the products at prices they know to be reasonable. This would recreate an exemption that would not allow tobacco retailers in Livermore to sell, excuse me, to sell at a fair price, market price point, and would send our customers elsewhere to purchase these." Okay, there's a few, so, excuse me for a second. The next one is from Amaya Wooding. "Good evening, council. I'm Amaya Wooding and I co-chair proudly against tobacco the Bay Area's LBT LGBTQ plus Tobacco Control Coalition. No matter how premium it is, the flavored tobacco used in pipes and cigars is an addictive, cancer-causing substance used by burning, inhaling, and inhaling. That's a curious thing to expand the availability of during a global respiratory health pandemic, which may, may be why no other jurisdiction in our region is thought to do it. Quite the opposite. Oakland Hayward and just last week Palo Alto have all closed prior loopholes in their flavored tobacco policy. Neither does a 21 and older sign make premium tobacco that tastes like honey, fruit extracts, vanilla, or cherry let, less accessible to young people who want it. Underage buyers seeking flavored tobacco can find retailers who sell it to them, even in age-restricted spaces. There is data from this, from the statewide Young Adult Tobacco Purchase Survey." Let me scroll. We're one-third of youth, and then there's, excuse me for a second. Her comment got split between a few comments. "One-third of youth, um, decoys ages 18 to 19 were able to get cigars or cigarettos when they asked for them at tobacco retailers. Nearly a third of tobacco stores and smoke shops sold to decoys who visited them. Please consider this information as you deliberate on this item. Thank you for acting in the best interests of the young people of Livermore. Good night." The next one is from SFPHF. "Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and councilmembers. My name is Brian Davis and I'm a member of Alameda County Tobacco Control Coalition. As I have shared with you previously, my niece and her two teenage children live in Livermore, and so I want to do everything I can to protect them. I know that may seem that exempting premium flavored cigars and pipe tobacco would not be a big deal. It is true that kids are primarily smoking menthol cigarettes, flavored cigarettos, and using e-cigarettes, which you are addressing. However, continuing to allow flavored tobacco product leaves the door open for youth experimentation. We all know that many teenagers will do things that are not good for them. Kids who are experimenting with flavored e-cigarettes now might see these remaining products as a new avenue to explore. It is not as though the one store in Livermore that exclusively sells premium cigars will go out of business. There are plenty unflavored, excuse me, this one got split as well, premium cigars for them to sell and adults who will smoke them. Stores that sell premium cigars and pipe tobacco along with other non-tobacco products will survive as well. Many local communities such as Fremont, Hayward, Alameda, unincorporated Alameda County, Oakland, Palo Alto, and Albany, among many other communities statewide and beyond, have chosen to treat all stores equally and to remove all flavored tobacco products, including the ones that are currently less popular from their jurisdictions. These communities also have businesses that exclusively sell tobacco, yet every store is required to remove all flavored tobacco items because those community leaders have chosen to protect their kids, just as I have chosen to do my part to protect my niece's kids by making a statement tonight. Please consider this information as you deliberate. Thank you." From Liz Williams, "Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and city councilmembers. Americans for Nonsmokers' Rights strongly encourages you to not exempt premium tobacco products from Livermore's flavored tobacco law. The city's law was adopted to help create a healthier environment in Livermore in response to the tobacco industry's predatory marketing of its products, especially to youth and communities of color. Allowing the sale of flavored premium cigars and pipe tobacco would not promote community health, but rather it would create a concerning exemption that would be difficult to enforce, is open to exploitation and potentially creates risks by treating products differently. If the city council accrues this exemption, Livermore would have the unfortunate distinction of being one of only two communities to exempt premium tobacco products from an otherwise strong flavored tobacco law. Instead, we urge Livermore to continue being one of the 54 cities and counties throughout California that..." Sorry, I thought there was a second. Looks like they didn't continue that, that thought. Okay. Then we have from Jen Grand Leano. "My name is Jen Grand Leano, Northern California Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. We, excuse me, we urge you tonight to keep the existing tobacco retailer policy as is and not exempt any tobacco products like premium cigars. We engaged in the long and contentious policy, policy process over the summer in the fight to keep Juul and Big Tobacco out of our kids' lives here in Livermore. You risked a lot to stand up to Big Tobacco and stand your ground, and you succeeded with a groundbreaking policy that set the model for the Tri-Valley and surrounding Bay Area. By exempting cigars, you are only weakening what is otherwise a very strong policy, and we urge you not to make any exemptions. While you have good intent to protect businesses, we know through best practices and policies like this across the country, tobacco industries always find a way to take advantage of those loopholes. As a national organization working at the local level, we've seen exemptions like this go sideways time and time again, despite the best intentions of thoughtful policymakers like yourselves. And we hate to see this happen in Livermore after the extraordinary effort that went into fighting for this existing policy. Making exemptions for some tobacco products only creates confusion and inconsistency in enforcement, sets a bad precedent for other jurisdictions considering similar policy, and leaves a way for Big Tobacco to continue, excuse me, to continue to outsmart health policy and get around the definitions we may believe to be airtight. Please don't unravel the hard work we all put in last summer and keep your strong policy as it is without any exemptions. Thank you." From Kristy Wang. "I'm Kristy Wang, mother of two teens and co-founder of Flavor Addicts Kids Livermore. Our group has submitted a letter outlining our concerns about the proposed premium tobacco exemption. We're particularly concerned about the way the language is written, the lack of clarity, and the loopholes it opens up for retailers. One thing has become clear with our newly created ordinance is that enforcement in a monumental endeavor, is a mon, excuse me, as, as a monumental endeavor. These products are sold in many stores throughout the city. Exempting a large category of products would further complicate an already difficult task. Exemptions provide a significant policy loophole for tobacco retailers and the industry to exploit and can leave tobacco products available in the community for youth to access. Currently, no jurisdiction in Alameda County has adopted a premium flavored tobacco products exemption, and all TRL ordinances adopted or updated in Alameda County within the past three years have prohibited the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemptions." City councils in Dublin and Pleasanton have stated they may consider following Livermore's lead if we carve out an exemption for premium tobacco. We believe our cities should lead by not creating one. Thank you for your continued commitment to the health of our community, and we look forward to working with you to protect the integrity of our tobacco retail ordinance." From Rachel Grants Lazarus. "Good evening, Council. Thank you for your leadership and ongoing commitment to protect the health and well-being of Livermore's youth and vulnerable residents through sensible public health policy. The strongest protection for youth and best practices in the field of tobacco control is a comprehensive TRL policy that prohibits the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemptions, as Livermore has already done. A premium tobacco exemption would weaken the city's hard-fought flavored tobacco law, which is intended to prevent youth access and initiation to tobacco use. We are aware of significant implementation and enforcement challenges, as well as unintended consequences in other jurisdictions that have pursued exemptions to their flavored tobacco laws. Exemptions provide a significant policy loophole for tobacco retailers and the industry to exploit, and can leave deadly tobacco products available in the community for youth to access." These are among the reasons why no other jurisdiction in Alameda County has adopted a premium-flavored tobacco ordinance, excuse me, a premium-flavored tobacco product exemption, and all TRL ordinances adopted or updated in Alameda County within the past three years have prohibited the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemptions to maximize health protections. Additionally, the current ordinance includes several concerns. First, the definition of premium cigars and premium pipe tobacco continue to present enforcement challenges. While the draft ordinance was updated to require retailers to prove that their products qualify under exemption criteria, Livermore's enforcement agency would have the burden of evaluating this information to determine whether retailers have sufficiently met the criteria. This includes assessing tobacco product ingredients as well as details regarding the manufacturing process for to, excuse me, for to meet the premium tobacco products, which could be a daunting task at best and impossible at worst. Second, the current draft allows tobacco retailers to qualify premium tobacco tag, regardless of whether the retailer was selling those products at the time the exemption was adopted. Therefore, even tobacco retailers who are not currently selling premium tobacco products could be eligible to receive a premium tobacco tag, encouraging new sales. Third, the current draft allows tobacco retailers to qualify for a premium tobacco tag, regardless of whether the business is closed or suspended sales for any period of time. The draft also allows for transfer of the tag to a new owner, thus maintaining the ability to sell harmful premium tobacco products in perpetuity. Fourth, while council initially pursued this exemption to support one retailer, the ordinance now allows up to ten premium tobacco tags to be distributed, one for each nine thousand residents. Should Livermore population decrease and lower the number of tags to be distributed, the city will need to determine which retailers can obtain a tag, yet there is a current now equitable criteria for this. Lastly, as the coronavirus pandemic spreads, there is a mounting concern that smokers may be at higher risk for COVID-19 and severe illnesses from COVID-19. For youth and vulnerable communities, there has never been a more crucial time to limit flavored tobacco access." Excuse me for a second. Okay. From Mary Perner. Public comment for consent item four point oh two. "Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and council members and staff. My name is Mary Perner, and I'm a thirty-two-year resident of Livermore. Please maintain the vaping TRL without exemptions. It's clear-cut and easy to enforce this way, and will ensure the health of our young people. A policy that is the same for all businesses, for all business people is also fair for them. Exemptions open the door for revision, loopholes, and more exemptions. Thank you for all that you have done for Livermore's kids. Let's make tonight a continuation of all that good work. No exemptions." Okay. And I'm, yeah, I'm gonna spell it, because I hate mispronouncing someone's name. The first name is A-D-I-T-Y-A, last name is I-N-D-L-A. Hello, my name is... I'm gonna say Aditya Indala, and I am a high school junior. The strongest way Livermore can protect the youth is with a comprehensive tobacco retail policy with no exemptions. Nine out of ten youths start tobacco use with flavored products. Adding exemptions in the past has provided a loophole for retailers to exploit and made it harder to enforce, placing youth at risk. No other jurisdiction in Alameda County in the past three years has adopted a premium-flavored tobacco product exemption. I urge Livermore to prioritize youth health by prohibiting the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemptions." From Annie Teigen. "The Tobacco Free Kids Action Fund strongly supports the passage of the TRL and other policies recently passed to reduce the use of sale of and exposure to tobacco in Livermore. We do not support the proposed exemptions. Please keep the lifesaving ordinance as is. Thank you. Annie Teigen, Campaign for Tobacco Free Kids." From Rosalynn Moya, co-chair of the Alameda County Tobacco Control Coalition, speaking on item four point oh two. "Livermore had the lead in the Tri Valley and even the nation with your TRL, and I thank the city council for that leadership and listening and protecting our youth, but this is a step back. Exemptions make enforcement challenging and can unintentionally create loopholes. It's difficult to tell the difference between premium and hand-rolled tobacco, excuse me, premium hand-rolled cigars. It's just not worth the risk to risk our children's youth health, excuse me." Okay. And from Scott Halfen. "My name is Scott Halfen, and I grew up and have lived in Livermore for forty years. I am the father of two daughters who will be entering middle school and high school this year. I take my responsibilities as parent very seriously. I try to instill good values in my children, but I know that when they leave home, there are temptations everywhere. That is why I feel a premium tobacco exemption would weaken the city's hard-fought flavored tobacco law, which is intended to prevent youth access and initiation to tobacco use. I support the city of Livermore's existing tobacco retail license ordinance with no exemptions." And from Karen Halfen. "My name is Karen Godin Halfen, and I've been a Livermore resident for over twenty years. I'm the mother of three daughters. My eldest is an adult. My second child is a freshman at Granada High School, and my youngest will enter sixth grade this year. I'm also a member of the Alameda County Tobacco Coalition, and I strongly oppose any exemption to Livermore's tobacco retail ordinance, as it undermines the strong TRL fought for last year and is not aligned with tobacco retail policy best practice. My work takes me throughout Alameda County to advocate for healthy alternatives for youth rather than turning tobacco and other substances. No jurisdiction in Alameda County has adopted a premium-flavored tobacco products exemption, and all TRL ordinances adopted, updated in Alameda County within the past three years have prohibited the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemptions in order to maximize health protection. Let us not move backwards. In December, the Alameda County Board of Supervisors passed one of the strongest TRL ordinances in the state, banning the sales of all flavored tobacco products in unincorporated areas of Alameda County. As elected officials, you too have an obligation to protect young people in our community from the health risks of flavored tobacco products. By maintaining the existing TRL, the city council ensures that Livermore will continue to prioritize the health and safety of our youngest and most vulnerable citizens by restricting youth access to tobacco products while encouraging responsible and healthy retailing. I support the city of Livermore's existing tobacco retail license ordinance with no exemptions." From Brittany Kick. "My name is Brittany Kick. I am a parent in Livermore. Please do not create an exemption for premium tobacco products. The most effective way to combat youth vaping is a strong TRL with no exemptions." From Emily Wilson. "Item four point oh two, please do not adopt the CBD prohibition, and has many benefits for those who battle cancer, have chronic illnesses, mental illnesses, and so much more. It's very important natural medicine for many." From Janelle Gladden. "I believe for the overall health of our community, especially during this time of COVID, we should not be considering any exemptions to our current TRL ordinance. I personally have observed several tobacco vape shops continue to be open for business through the county's SIP. This shows our community that these businesses are more interested in profits than following the law. Enforcement is bound to be an issue." Oh, and earlier I was looking, Ms. Gladden, from just the previous one, had a continuation, I apologize. To continue, her thought was exemptions for premium tobacco flavors is not best practice with our state, and no community in Alameda County has such exemptions. "I'm also very concerned about the enforcement of any such exemption, and exempt products are very difficult to distinguish from other prohibited flavored tobacco products. Thank you, city council members, for your continued consideration of the issue and the protection of our community." Okay. And earlier we, I apologize, sometimes the comments get separated. Liz Williams was one I was looking for earlier, and this is the second part of her comment. Okay. Part of... "From Americans for Nonsmokers Rights, we urge Livermore to continue being one of the fifty-four cities and counties throughout California that have laws that end the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemption for premium tobacco. These laws should apply equally to all flavored tobacco products and all retailers. Decades of experience shows this, that it's a standard tobacco industry tactic to try and chip away at strong laws in order to maintain accessibility and use of their products. You know a law is strong and effective when the tobacco industry pushes back. Also, given the respiratory risks associated with COVID-19, it is important to reduce risks to lung health, and the council should not weaken tobacco control protections. Health experts warn the coronavirus can be even more dangerous for people who smoke because it's a respiratory disease that attacks the lungs. It's never been a better time to protect the health of our communities. Thank you." And the last one, from Karen G. Moore. "The premium tobacco shop in Livermore is dedicated to selling premium products to adults only. We have total control over who enters and is able to purchase our products. The premium products do not appeal to the youth in this community. We are selling illegal product to adult consumers only." And that concludes the comments on Zoom. Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you very much. Okay, so there being no comments on YouTube, those were the Zoom comments?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Well, in that case, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. We certainly heard from the the community. I'd like to bring it back for comments to the council. Let's see, Councilmember Carling, you're handling it up first.
Thank you. I, a couple of things. One is I wanted to thank Jason Alcala and his staff for doing such a comprehensive analysis of this and spending the time and putting together this ordinance. I think that also the folks that took the time to comment tonight appreciate all the comments. And again, I always value the comments from the community pretty highly, so it was also very instructive. I also thought it was interesting that almost all the comments, save one, had to do with the exemption and not the ordinance against prohibiting the sale of CBD and the electronic smoking devices. And if I'm right, Mr. Alcala, if we did nothing on the first item in four point oh two, and that is the exemption, that would simply die, and we wouldn't, nothing would change, right?
Councilmember Carling, that is correct. If the council were to not take any action relative to that ordinance, it would die administratively. Correct.
But regarding the CBD, we would have to deliberately or make a a motion to prohibit the sale of CBD electronic smoking devices and the device fluids. Is that correct?
That is correct. We would need a motion to introduce that particular ordinance.
All right, thanks. Well, I'm certainly in favor of the latter in terms of prohibiting CBD electronic devices and device fluids. I think I was at one time sympathetic to the notion that we had a business in town that was in the, that was in the business, frankly, of selling in part of their product flavored pipe tobacco and premium cigars, but I'm less enthusiastic about that than I once was. So I certainly have been, I guess, swayed by the overwhelming comments from folks, and I'm not in support of the exemption, but I would be in support of prohibiting the sale of electronic smoking devices. So I'll leave it at that at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Monroe, followed by Vice Mayor Warner.
Well, I think Councilmember Carling has said pretty much everything I wanted to say. So I could just say ditto, but I too would like to thank the city attorney and his team. And speak, I have been impressed at the level of diligence shown by the people who really are committed to keeping vaping out of... Keeping these instruments of frankly death out of the hands of youth and hopefully out of the hands of preventing illness and death from everybody for these. I'm glad that we have this intervening time, because in that time between when we passed the TRL and now, because I've been able to see how behavior, how this has worked out, and frankly, not terribly well. One of the things I've been getting in my mail, such as it is these days, have been advertisements for smoking vape shops in Livermore. And I'm not really sure that's something I want to encourage. So, yeah, I prefer not to see this go forward. And as with Councilmember Carling, the addition of the, despite the comment regarding the CBD, I am concerned that that can be used, and those can be used inappropriately. So I would support that latter and let the performer die as well.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I agree with the previous two council members, that the community has shown a lot of effort here, a lot of good research. I believe their arguments are compelling, and I see no reason at this point to modify, to give an exemption. And I see that the right course of action here is to do none on the first and to approve the second.
I think, thank you. I think one of the things that we've seen tonight is that the city council does, in fact, listen to the community. When we first passed this, we heard that there were some concerns from the community, and we sought to explore ways to possibly meet everyone's needs. However, in retrospect, as we've looked more carefully at this issue, and we've heard from the community, we've heard that most people start smoking with flavored tobacco products. We know that tobacco products manipulate the level of nicotine to get people addicted and to keep people addicted. So you see these two things working in tandem. Flavors to get people to try it, and the nicotine to keep them hooked. So this is about protecting the health and safety of the people in our community. So I agree with my colleagues as well, that even though, also, we've seen from the use of vaping, that cost is not necessarily deterrent to keep people, especially youth, from using these products, from using these nicotine products, because some of these devices were very expensive, and yet youth were still using them. So that, that argument that we heard about having a higher price point didn't necessarily ring true, and also we saw that, we saw complaints from folks in the industry saying that that price point that we declared as premium tobacco was too high. Well, that's the point. It's to act as a disincentive. So again, I echo the sentiment of my colleagues. I certainly appreciate the tremendous work that our city attorney's office has done, going one direction and then giving us the justification to look more critically at the exemptions. So with that, I see Councilmember Monroe and Councilmember Carling, is that... So with that, I see Councilmember Monroe and Councilmember Carling, is that playing any chance of motion?
Yes. It will be in a moment.
Okay.
I, I wanted to make a couple of comments. I see that in the attendees, somebody has a hand up, and I just wanted to remind them that actually that's, you know, the Q and A is how to, how to do it. The, we're the only ones that get to put our hands up, sorry. And the second thing is, is that this has been a huge attendance. I see, I see 56 attendees out there. And I'm really hoping that people stick around for the rest of the council meeting. It's, you know, this isn't the only item that, that that's worth, worth paying attention to. So stick around. We're just getting started here. With that, I would like to move that we pass the second ordinance. Help me, help me with this because I'm still not doing it terribly well. So.
Councilmember Carling, you want a little help there?
No.
Why don't you do it? I'll second it.
Yeah, I'll move that we prohibit the sale of CBD electronic smoking devices and electronic smoking device fluids.
See, and then I'll second, and I'm good.
Okay. And then no action on the first item. So that will die administratively. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Hi.
Mayor Marshon?
Hi.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. That.
Comment, John. I just want to again, thank all the people that have been involved in this over the last several months, not just tonight, but over the last several months. And certainly educating me and I would, I would assume educating all of us on council as to the dangers of this. And I think they're to be congratulated for helping us make these kinds of important decisions for the health and safety of all the folks in Livermore.
I absolutely agree. And it's actually been a year, Councilmember Carling. And I'd like to thank the, the tremendous efforts from the peer groups at the high schools. I went to a number of meetings with the peer groups where they sought to educate the council and the tremendous effort to get the word out and to get the, the public comments to help us listen to the community and take the actions that the community wants. So great. I agree with all of you. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we've gotten through the consent calendar. First public hearing is 5.01. That was regarding the master fee schedule. However, that has been continued to the adjourned regular meeting of August 24th. So that'll be coming up in two weeks from tonight. That we go to 5.02, which is the hearing to receive protests related to the annual fire hazard abatement program and to confirm the 2020 weed abatement assessments for the collection on the Alameda County Assessor's Tax Roll. So with that, looking for a staff report.
Honorable mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and we have our fire marshal Ryan Rucker here to give us a staff report on item 5.02.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
Rucker.
Thank you. Good morning, evening. Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. On April 27th of this year, the council adopted Resolution 2020-050, declaring existing conditions of growing weeds, accumulated refuse, rubbish, or dirt on private properties, streets, parkways, sidewalks adjacent to each parcel of real property are a public nuisance and should be abated. On June 8th, the city council ordered the abatement of hazardous vegetation on the parcels identified in Exhibit A of the attached resolution and declare that the abatement costs, including administrative costs incurred by the city, are the responsibility of the property owner. A schedule has been provided to all property owners, which includes abatement timelines, type of work needed based on parcel type, as well as the administrative costs, which are charged when the city performs the abatement. The fire department concluded hazardous vegetation abatement of three parcels in July of 2020 at a total cost of $7,375. The public hearing tonight is to consider any and all protests, and if council finds it appropriate, adopt a resolution overruling protests, confirm the 2020 weed abatement assessments, and direct staff to forward a certified copy of the assessment report to the county auditor. That concludes my presentation. The staff, staff is now available for questions.
Okay, I can't let it go, especially after dealing with 4.02. The first thing you talk about is growing weeds. But, but other than that, do we have questions for staff at this point? Before I open the public hearing, any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public comment period for the, the public hearing. Do we have any, any protests on the public hearing?
Mayor, we've received no comments.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Do we have a motion?
I guess I'll move that we accept staff recommendations.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner.
I'll second that.
Okay, Vice Mayor Warner got in just ahead of you.
Cool.
So. Do it the other way.
That's all right.
Seconded it. Okay, good.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Hi.
Mayor Marshon?
Hi. Thank you very much. 6.01, this is the report from our Director of Emergency Services regarding our COVID-19 emergency, its impacts, and the government operations in response to that emergency. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening. I am Mark Roberts, your city manager. I am also the Director of Emergency Services during this emergency. Wanted to give you an update on our activities and status here during the last couple of weeks since the last time we had a council meeting. First of all, starting off with the numbers. In Livermore, as of earlier today, we had 583 cases that were reported by the county here in Livermore. And that's as a comparison to the city of Pleasanton, which has 261, and Dublin, which has 158. Even after converting to cases per hundred thousand, you can see that we in Livermore continue to have significantly more cases than our tri-valley neighbors, either in Alameda County or surrounding Contra Costa County. Our seven-day rolling average of increase in cases for Livermore remains at about 10. The good news is that's remained relatively steady over the past four weeks. The bad news is that's far too high for us to make any forward progress at all within the county or within the city in opening further businesses up or any steps to return economic activity, which has been curtailed, back to a more normal level. We, at the city council direction, when the council authorized outdoor dining in our downtown, you directed your staff to continue to monitor that situation on an ongoing basis. Over the past three weeks of the street closures, we monitored informally and then did a full survey of businesses in the downtown. The results of that survey pointed that while our restaurateurs were generally okay with the street closure, our retailers were suffering a significant downturn in their business. We had said since the very beginning, as your staff, that we would continue to evaluate all of our activities under our emergency powers and make adjustments appropriately when what we were doing wasn't having the intended outcome. Obviously, our intended outcome, as your staff, was to maintain and improve business in the downtown. Based on the results of that survey and the strong, the strong support for at least consideration of alternatives, this past weekend, we did not close the street. Anecdotal information from our retailers noted that they had a significantly better weekend. And we do expect to put out additional survey work in the coming weeks as we continue to move forward. And we've also received comments from restaurateurs in the community wanting to receive the results of our initial survey, which we have provided and will continue to provide to folks who want to take a look at that. And the second item is, we will, we've been requested to go out and do additional survey work. We did notice that one of the other items that we were taking a look at was, you know, how did social distancing work when the street was closed and how did it change when the street was open? In our analysis of people using the actual empty street, there were actually very few people who were using that for circulation. So this last weekend, when the street was open, we noticed a relatively modest change in the sidewalks, almost imperceptible. You also have directed me to go through a series of steps to improve adherence to Alameda County's health orders related to face coverings. We had, starting three weeks ago, began a program of aggressively noticing, especially in the downtown, that face masks are required. We updated our messaging to include both our case count in relationship to our neighbors, noting that we have significantly more cases here in Livermore, so the face covering was even more important. Finally, last weekend, after two weeks of warning folks and handing out masks, we added our police department to aid us with our enforcement activity. And this last weekend began engaging folks one-on-one. So before, we had our neighborhood preservation folks walking downtown, handing out masks. Generally, most people were willing to accept the mask and put it on. This last weekend, we added essentially the, the concept of a citation to that. You will recall that when you reworked our public nuisance ordinance earlier this year, after the beginning of the pandemic, you added essentially non-compliance with a county health order as a type of nuisance in the city of Livermore. And so indeed, it is that ordinance which we are enforcing at this particular time. The good news is we had a very good compliance. More than 90% of folks were wearing masks at all times. We have, however, noticed that as the evening goes on, that that compliance essentially drops from 90% plus to lower than that. You'll remember that one of my orders for outdoor dining did essentially end essentially outdoor dining activity at 11:00 PM with a last call at 10:30. And that was because of the transition that happened, both in the downtown and throughout the city, where the majority of people who were out at our restaurants after 11:00 PM were primarily there to consume alcohol. And in those cases, adherence to face masks, social distancing, and other requirements of the health order were not at all being followed. We are continuing to observe that later in the evening, we are having low compliance rates. So we'll be reaching out and working with our restaurants on a continuous basis to try and improve the safety of those establishments, especially in the later evenings. The first part of the evening is starting out great in every case. Folks are complying. So we'll be working with them to make sure that folks both know the rules and then if they need help with enforcement, that we can provide that. But obviously, we'll be looking for ideas from some of our restaurateurs to get that. So we're, we're excited that I think our compliance is noticeably up during the past four weeks. And so that's a major victory as we continue to move forward. So the, essentially, the street non-closure, the continuing to work with our downtown merchants and survey that. Just because we didn't close, of course, this last week, doesn't mean we might not ever in some configuration at some point. We want to work with all of our downtown merchants to see are there other times when a closure or other activities downtown might not compromise public health, but would ultimately help businesses downtown. So we'll continue to look for those opportunities across the board. And with that, that wraps up my presentation this evening, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions for the city manager? Vice Mayor Warner, followed by Councilmember Carling.
Thank you for the report. I've got a, a couple of follow-up. Make sure I understood. First, you know, the concerning increase in cases that we have, and it's above our neighboring cities. Do we, I know a while ago, we talked about trying to get some information from the county with, that would give us some sense of what the drivers are and if there are any pockets or whether it's generally spread. Could you give an update on our ability to get some more information so we might have an idea of what we can do better?
Yes, absolutely. At the council's direction, I took an item to the Alameda County City Managers Association. And the group overall asked the county health department if they would be willing to provide the more granular data that they do have, because they do collect quite a bit of data on age, ethnicity, sex, where people live, beyond essentially just what city they live in. And the health official noted that they were willing to provide that information, noted that, that they would be willing to train our staff on how to essentially go into their data system and pull that more granular data out. We are, we have assigned staff for that training. We expect the county to give us some dates here in the next 10 days or two weeks to complete that training. And at that point, we should have much more granular information, at least as far as race, sex, location, age, and some other activities. We certainly know at the county level, most of the cases by far are for folks who are under 50. Most of the deaths are by those over 70. So we also know that certain populations are impacted much more. Those who, essentially, communities of color are impacted much more than white communities. Communities that live in poverty are much more impacted. So we'll be able to sort of do a little more detective work. And in particular, get a sense perhaps of both age, location, race, sex that might help us design some programs to target those groups that we're having the most challenges with.
So, well, thank you for that. I would just want to urge, if we could do it faster, I mean, we've been into this for a while. And not having some of the data that would give us some impact of what we really could do that would be beneficial, it's, no, it's frustrating because we see what's going on. But I don't think we have a clear path to doing anything. We do know that face coverings are the only thing that we know of for sure. But, you know, how is this being transmitted within the community and what do we do? I'm glad that we're taking action downtown, and I think I wanted to ask what about more broadly in the community, are we doing anything? And I'm also wondering, have we issued any citations? Do we intend to issue any? It is concerning to me that we know when the compliance is less, and I think we've stated that for a few weeks now. Are we actually taking the, are we doing what we should be doing? Because drinking alcohol and getting close together without the facial coverings is a high probability of causing this. And so I would urge that we take action to increase compliance after hours as quickly as we can. And, and let's see, I think, yeah, so that's that. And is there any, do you have any thoughts on if we can do it faster? And then could you talk to us about what do we see going on in the rest of the town? And to what extent are we coordinating with, say, LARPD? Do we have enough compliance there? And are people really doing what they're supposed to be doing? And I'll just end with, I think the guidance from the health department requirements has evolved. And are we sure that our signage and what we're asking people to do is really to date? So thank you. You could just speak to a couple of those things.
Certainly. We issued one formal warning, which is a citation with a warning rather than a citation that has a $100 penalty to it. We were, as you noted, we began with the process of handing out masks for several weeks. This last week, we issued a warning, beginning this coming week, if necessary, and there is non-compliance, we will issue citations. We want to give people plenty of notice. You are correct. I believe we have absolutely done that as a community. It has now been more than a month that we have stepped up our enforcement on that. Related to the issue of providing detailed information to those who are in the downtown, so there's clarity by both our businesses and those who are attending downtown. We have provided more information, but we will continue to step that up and are considering ideas such as, you know, literally a placard on every table reminding folks that when you are sitting there waiting to order, when you are interacting with your server, when you are doing anything but eating or drinking directly, you are required to have a mask so that there's no misunderstanding about those items. We have coordinated community-wide with our emphasis on enforcement being at areas where there are being at areas where there are large gatherings of people. So for us, that means in the downtown. It also means out at the outlets. And in addition, of course, we have responded to complaints and comments at our larger retailers throughout the community during the entire pandemic, and we'll continue to do so. We have noticed, however, in the past few weeks in particular, our larger retailers are doing much better and compliance is close to 100% in many of those retailers, whether it be Lowe's or Home Depot or Target or some of our grocery stores or other things. So we're making a lot of progress in those areas. It appears our major areas where we still have challenges is environments that are outdoors, that feel like perhaps maybe it's not absolutely required. We have coordinated with LARPD in enforcement to make sure that we are getting our messaging and theirs at the same way. But our emphasis has not been hunting people down on trails just because the risk of transmission is much more limited in an outdoor environment that has relatively large spaces between people. But you are correct, we do need to continue to message to folks that anytime you're within 30 feet of someone else, you do need to be wearing or have a mask available, be ready to wear that. If you are doing activities such as jogging or biking or other things where you are breathing harder than somebody at rest, the risk of transmission goes up there. So conveying those messages out to the community. In addition, you all asked that we take a look at putting our information on banners downtown in our lightbulb banners as well. Staff has explored that, and we are in the process of getting those banners made. So you will see some messaging going up over Fourth Street and South Livermore Avenue in the coming weeks and months as we continue to move this forward.
Yeah, thank you. I've seen, I'm getting photographs of other downtown areas where they actually have signs that very simply say, no mask equals $100 fine. So other cities are taking this very seriously, and I think we need to as well. Councilmember Carling, followed by Councilmember Monroe.
Yes, thank you. The first question I was going to ask is, I didn't understand what the concept of a citation meant. So that means that we're on the verge of giving money?
So essentially, this last weekend, we gave a citation that included a warning. So the equivalent of a fix-it ticket, it did not have a financial penalty behind it. Beginning this coming week, you will actually have $100 fine, as we are, if there is noncompliance and people don't comply.
Okay, the other question I had is, that last meeting, I thought, I heard the last call was at 10:30 and that the bars closed at 11:00. Is that true or did I misremember?
That's true.
So the point is, is that people are hanging out at the bars after 11 o'clock?
No, sir. They're required to actually be clear from that area. The time, the time period between 9:00 PM and 11:00 PM is when we are documenting less compliance.
Oh, I see. I would also remark again, I, I'm out on my bike every day. And I would agree that downtown is reasonably good compliance. But I still think, even though I think it's better, but I would say fully half or more of the people that I see either walking, jogging, you know, pushing strollers or bicycles and so on, do not wear, do not have masks. And I think, so for example, I was riding up Livermore and, you know, I passed the library there where the coffee shop is, and they have a sign out every day offering coffee for pickup and have a phone number. Why can't we have a sign out there and at other locations entering Livermore that say, wear your mask if you're going to be in Livermore, wear your masks? I think we ought to continue, I think the banners are a great idea, but I think we need just to continue to put out more and more signage that says, we expect you to wear a mask if you're going to be outside. The other thing that I wondered about is, and it gets to Vice Mayor Werner's question about do we know where these pockets are, if you want to call it that? I'm not sure that really applies here. But do we know why our numbers are higher than our neighbors? And I was wondering if we, have we ever asked any of the labs that do the kind of modeling that they do? If they could help with us understanding? I mean, we've got a lot of smart people out the end of East Avenue that do a lot of fancy modeling. But given the data that we can get from Alameda County, to your point earlier, are there, are there ways that they could look at this and will be applying some of their own techniques that we probably don't have access to at the city staff? Is there a way we could use that talent out there? In a way that, well, we had, my point is, I think we ought to take advantage or at least ask the question, if they could help us understand what's going on?
I think that's an outstanding suggestion. We have not formally asked, we did not have the base data before, but now we will be getting the base data. So I think that's an outstanding, at least, request. And we'll see if anybody at Sandia or Lawrence can give us a hand because you are, you are right. You know, those folks do modeling. We do not know for certain why our numbers are higher. Clearly, there is some alignment with some of the things we do know countywide and statewide throughout the country. One is communities of color, especially Hispanic communities, are very hard hit. And in fact, the city of Livermore has the highest Hispanic population of any of the Tri-Valley cities. Poverty is another essentially area where there is alignment between cases because of generally the type of work that is done, service work or other things where there's less protection, no ability to stay home and shelter in place, as well as generally crowded housing conditions. And Livermore is the most economically diverse of the communities in the Tri-Valley. So those two markers would align. There is at least some understanding that obviously, large gatherings are another item. We've had several large gatherings from a variety of sources, everything from church services to protests. Some of the activity could be related back to that. But on a demographic level, if you were trying to predict which of the Tri-Valley cities would have the most issues, you would assume Livermore would have that. And then finally, you know, the one thing that we are trying to make certain isn't the case is areas where people congregate. And if you don't have a downtown, like some of our Tri-Valley neighbors, there's not that risk of having people congregate for long periods of time, even outdoors. So we need to sort of be dealing with all of those issues, whether it's a language barrier, whether it's an information barrier, whether it's an enforcement barrier, and your staff is looking at all of those issues. And I want to add that your suggestion of asking for a little modeling help from our friends at the end of East Avenue, I think would be an outstanding idea.
I just have one other comment. New York Times had an editorial on Sunday. And I, and I, I thought about this with regard to Councilmember Monroe's suggestion of last meeting or the meeting before about putting up numbers. And I worry that numbers may be people don't understand. But apparently, a couple of communities are putting up sort of threat assessments by, based on color. And, you know, color-coded threat assessments. And it might be an interesting way of communicating to people that we're kind of red at this point because our cases are so high. I mean, you could decide whether a red or orange or something like that. But rather than putting up numbers for which people may not have a good basis of comparison, colors might be another way to convey, particularly as the people are walking downtown, another way to convey how we're doing. And again, it's just another thought because I think, again, as, as I and others have talked about, and even the staff, I think we, we need to continue to think about how we can communicate in a variety of different ways. And I had made the suggestion about the schools and their electronic devices out in front of their facilities, talk about wearing masks. I know Sunset's got a thing up there that says, enjoy your summer, wear your seatbelt. Well, they could say, enjoy your summer, wear your mask. And I think reaching out to the school district to have that go up there on a repeat basis, I think is just another way to communicate in different parts of town, that this is, no kidding, folks, you gotta wear your mask. Thank you.
Councilmember Carling, I did want to, I was remiss that our staff has already reached out to the school district based on your prior direction. At the district level, we were extraordinarily well-received. So they were pretty excited about giving us a hand on that. And we will, and we and they are coordinating. Each of those reader boards is run by the facility that it sits upon. So we'll be working out with essentially all of the school facilities that have those reader boards. And you should expect to see some mask messages showing up, hopefully before too long.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Monroe, you had a second?
Thanks. This is just a real quick question. And it really, it is related to the getting more information out. So I'm glad to hear that you answered to some degree the question about working with the school district. I believe you have been putting out more information because I heard from somebody who said, I saw it. And I'm wondering whether, whether you've had any feedback on that? On, on getting numbers out? I believe we're up on some marquee. I didn't actually see it, but it was reported back to me.
Yes, Councilmember Monroe, you are correct. At council direction, again, we have been wrestling with this issue of context. And so in the downtown kiosks, there is an inset in our information that is essentially requiring people to wear masks that has the graph of Dublin, Livermore, and Pleasanton. Essentially, we're showing the Livermore map of cases being significantly higher and steeper. And so yes, that information went out before the last weekend. And we have received some, some positive feedback that people appreciated having the numbers. And in that case, it was a graphical context showing that we are much higher than our neighbors who are similarly situated. So the concept of a color coding is another way we can examine. Obviously, one of the things we're trying to be careful is to not create something that is conflicting with an agreed-upon standard or scale. But we can coordinate with Alameda County and see if we, if there is a way to sort of note where we stand versus, you know, others in the county. We, we know we are now middle of the range, we're fifth out of the 13 cities. As you'll recall, we were at the very low end up until the reopening. And so we have been hit, you know, very hard since the shelter-in-place has been relaxed. And that's our challenge here as we try and communicate that information. We'll be looking at a variety of tools to do that.
Right. I have to say, I'm, I like very, I find those, that graph to be extremely compelling simply because it shows the, you know, we're twice effectively what Pleasanton is, we're three times what Dublin is. Yes, I understand some of the likely reasons for it. Nevertheless, brings the point home to me at least very, very strongly.
Okay. Yeah, as I said in my State of the City address, wearing a mask is not a political statement, it's an IQ test. I've said this many, many times, but I spend an inordinate amount of time on Nextdoor. And there are a lot of folks on Nextdoor that they hear all of this, they just don't believe it. And, and that's unfortunately, it's their choice. But every single day in the newspaper, I see the, the color scales that they have in the newspaper. They've actually changed the color scheme a couple of times because you can just, you go to dark red or dark purple or find it a black, dark green. So they've changed the scales. Everybody knows, I mean, they, everybody hears this. It's whether or not they actually believe it. And there are people that are making the choice that they choose to not believe this, even though this is very real to those of us who are following the evidence. So it's, it's a difficult thing to do. But you give people the data, but it's their choice whether or not to follow what that data directs you to do. So unfortunately, this is the first time in my decades of service in, in public health where I have seen the concept of public health being politicized. But that's exactly what we're seeing, and people are making the choice to not wear a mask, which gets me to my next point. There are cynics in the bunch, I'm sure, that are saying, okay, yeah, I'm going to get a citation. What's the process behind that? Because after all, they can just take the attitude, well, the courts are overwhelmed, San Quentin is releasing people because they, they can't handle the, the impact. What are the odds that I'm going to actually have to pay this, this fine? Because the courts are overwhelmed. So just kind of educate me on the process of this. How do we make sure that we can, that we can follow through with this? Because yes, the courts are overwhelmed.
So the only good news on that enforcement is that your nuisance ordinance essentially is a monetary penalty, not a incarceration penalty. So we would not be locking anyone up for not wearing a mask. It costs you $100 the first time, $250 the second time, and $500 the third time. You are correct, we do rely upon the courts for processing that. And we would expect that it might take some time at the current, in the current situation. But we do ultimately expect, expect some help and backup from the court system since, of course, this is a public health emergency. It is not something we are doing just because it's fun. In fact, it's just the opposite of that. So it is an infraction, essentially, it is a monetary penalty. And ultimately, you know, we would go through the steps necessary to impose that fine. And we do expect to have some cooperation there. With any luck, we won't have a bunch of these to go through because of course, what we're really after is having people comply and getting the compliance so widespread that it becomes, you know, just like other socially unacceptable things to do in a group. And there's lots of unpleasant things that people can do in a group. Most people don't do those things because they like to actually be out in public.
Just to follow up with that, I see Councilmember Coomer has his hand raised. But one of the things that I've found very helpful in compliance when you're dealing with, with folks with fines and the likes, if you can go after them with the Department of Motor Vehicles, if you can affect the registration of your driver's license, that has a remarkable ability to get people to cooperate.
Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Coomer.
Mr. City Manager, what, do you know if we're citing individuals? What code and what section we are citing? Is this a Health and Safety Code thing or a Penal Code section? Do we know?
No, it is actually, you, earlier, you all, the council, earlier this spring after the pandemic began, you added a section to your nuisance ordinance. So this is the same sort of-
It's going to be, okay, all right.
And essentially, noncompliance with a county health order is actually now a local item that can be enforced. We are not, we are not separately enforcing county or state law. It is actually against local law to not comply with state and county orders. So it's a nuisance.
All right, cool, thank you.
Okay. Any questions, further questions before I open up the public comment period? Okay, seeing no further questions, I'm going to open the public comment period. Now, City Clerk, are there any public comments at this point?
Yes, there are. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
Okay, the first comment is from Jackie Cotta. And it says, I am commenting on the recent decision to find people not wearing masks. Having a medical condition prohibits me from wearing a mask. Having 20% hearing loss in my left ear, I rely in reading lips when speaking to some people, especially when there is significant background noise. Wearing a mask prohibits me from being able to understand what people are saying when speaking to me. Also, I have severe asthma and wearing a mask prohibits proper air intake. I also have anxiety from a childhood trauma of claustrophobia, and wearing a mask brings back that trauma. On top of these issue, issues, I suffer from vestibular migraine, which symptoms include vertigo, 24/7 migraine, tinnitus, anxiety, brain fog, and a whole host of other symptoms. When I wore a mask at the very beginning to the grocery store, I ended up passing out on the floor. This is very dangerous and I refuse to experience this again. Since the mask mandate, I am constantly verbally assaulted by people who bully and abuse me because to look at me cannot see my medical conditions. The bullying has gone as far as having the police called on me and an article in the Pleasanton Weekly written about me without the courtesy of even contacting me to discuss the reason for my not wearing a mask, but public shaming. The behavior I experience every time I leave my house from so-called caring adults is insane and exacerbated my conditions. The city of Livermore threatening to find people like me for not wearing a mask that has, has zero proof of preventing the spread of COVID-19 is maddening. We do not live in a communist country and it is not, excuse me, sorry. We do not live in a communist country and it has now gotten to that point where we're being told we have to walk around with our papers. I, as a community member, would appreciate if our council would start pushing back on the health officer for our businesses and your citizens who are suffering needlessly. You talk about cases going up, which means nothing. PCR, SARS, COVID-2 is only one aspect of the virus and that is from healthy people with a 99.9% recovery rate. And therapeutics, we're, we as a community are tired of these draconian measures being imposed on us for no reason. It's time to move on and it's time for our council to follow the science and not the propaganda and stand up for our businesses and our citizens. Again, cases mean nothing. We were originally locked down to prevent death and ensure our hospitals were not overrun ICU, excuse me, ICU units, and that has not happened and it's still not happening. Stop moving the bar and making people suffer. We do not need more signage. We cannot get away from the messaging and we are tired of it. And then from Donald Lot, it's time for non-mask wearers to be subject to fines. There are far too many healthy individuals in downtown not wearing masks. Education is out and many simply disregard the public health agenda. Visit Sauce BBQ on a sunny day and you'll see up to 50% not wearing masks. Other cities have already adopted $100 fines and the number in compliance goes way up. I support the enforcement of proper face masks, proper social distance behavior and the safe reopening of downtown businesses when these enforcements are in place. From Brittany Kick, we can communicate with businesses. That is important to be aware of deaf, hard of hearing community in terms of mask enforcement. Many people must read lips and it's impossible with masks. It is legal to pull your mask down for a minute to speak with a deaf, hard of hearing community members. Some people seem nervous to do so for fear of being in trouble for pulling masks down. Can you look into that? And that concludes the comments on Zoom.
Anything on YouTube?
Yes, we have received comments on YouTube. Evan V 6.01, everyone, please wear a mask and be safe. He continues on, I support what the TV restaurant group says. Thank you for your employees and owners stepping up to enforce and to do all that you can to keep our city and your staff safe. We received another one from Monica Brass. We tell everyone who walks in our door that they can, that they need to keep their mask on. People have been very cooperative. People are not accustomed to seeing the science and data play out in real time and the inclination is to not believe the constant change of information. It's unfortunate. And the last one is from Tri Valley Restaurant Group Livermore. A new graphic, large scale, large banners, public signage campaign to promote mask wearing would be helpful. Visibility is key for keeping our downtown safe and compliant. And that concludes the comments on YouTube.
Okay, very good. With that, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council, comments from the council. Councilmember Monroe.
Working on it. There we go. A couple of comments. First of all, I would like, I would like to see us getting to higher numbers of mask, mask wearings. I appreciate Ms. Cota's comments in terms of her, of her concerns. There is a fair bit of non-science in her comments as well. I would like us to not have that. You know, stick with the science, please, and wear the masks. That said, I think both she and Ms. Kick raise the question of what do we do with people who have to read lips? And I'm wondering if there is a way to think about that. Can we have, can we pass out face shields for those people who need to read lips? Is there a way that we as a, as a, as a city can address those people who have serious problems around communicating? So that's, that's question number one. A second point is, I put out a letter just based on my own experience that I, the city put out on, on my behalf. I would like to see us as a city council, speak to the issue of mask wearing, of observing the science, of doing this in a way that helps everyone. I, I, every, you know, every council meeting, I'll say, look, my hair is a little longer. I'm still looking to get a haircut here. It'd be nice. My hair's, right. My hair has not been this long since the 1980s. It's, it's distressing. And I cannot, I, you know, I mean, I'm inconvenienced, right? I just cannot, I feel for the hairstylists, I feel for those beauty professionals. We cannot open unless we get this under control. So is there a way that we as a council together can, can ensure that that happens? And then the third point is, given that this is not going away, perhaps we, again, as a council or in conjunction with some of staff, could have a regular online, you know, Zoom meeting with citizens, with residents rather, to discuss these issues on, on an ongoing basis. So.
Again, to, just to address Ms. Cota, it's kind of an interesting thing because she's saying that she can't wear a face mask because she needs to read lips. Well, actually goes the other way around. She needs for other people to not wear face masks so that she can read lips. But as far as the claustrophobia, there are, are face shields now that, that don't restrict breathing. They, they go down across the face. There's open space all around. They can see clearly. So it's not a claustrophobic experience. It's not inhibiting their breathing. So what I would suggest is a face shield from Ms. Cota. And what we've heard is there's concern about people not wearing masks, walking down the street, being in crowded situations. But certainly Ms. Cota, if, or people that are, as Ms. Kick pointed out, if people are hearing impaired and they need to be able to read lips, well, then they could simply, they, the, the hearing impaired individual, wearing a face shield, could then ask the person to lower their mask while they're having a conversation. But once that person is finished speaking, then they can put the mask back up. Again, this is about protecting other people. It's not to protect the mask wearer, it's to protect the other people. So face shields will accomplish, I think, all of Ms. Cota's concern. If she wears a face shield, she won't be bullied by people that are interpreting the science as they see it, because they see the numbers going up and to them, those numbers going up do matter. So if these people can wear a face shield and then if they can't hear, since all the other people that are believing the science are wearing masks, they can lower their face shield to have their lips read and then just replace it. So it accomplishes everything. We're following the science. And we're, again, looking out after folks that are the most vulnerable in our community.
Well said.
Looking for any other comments? Vice Mayor Warner.
I'd like to switch topics with respect to this a little bit. And I'd like to ask the city manager, what can we do to help the businesses within the community that are suffering? And as Councilmember Monroe pointed out, we can't reopen and, and let those businesses have a chance of survival until we get these numbers under control. So it's very vital. But we've also seen that there is a, we're not getting the, necessarily the compliance that we need in order to bring the numbers down. We don't know why. The numbers are going up and we don't know exactly what we can do. So there, in that situation, I think it's reasonable to assume that we're going to be in this for the long haul. And I think it's also reasonable to assume that our businesses, especially the small businesses, are very vulnerable in this situation. So I'd like to ask the city manager if it would be possible to come back in a couple of weeks with thoughts for the council, as something we might give you guidance on, with respect to allocating a significant amount of money to helping the businesses. Now, we don't know the details of how to do it, but I do believe it's time critical that we get going. For instance, just as an example, the restaurants have been contacting us and pointing out that they need to think about how they could continue to provide service outdoors in the winter. And that's going to take some significant amount of money for them to do that. To what extent can we help? And what would be the process that we could do that in a way that is equitable? Because it's not just restaurants in this community that are vulnerable. So I would like to ask the city manager if it's, if it's possible for you to come back in a couple of weeks at the next council meeting with some thoughts on how we might allocate, say somewhere between one to two million in this, for that to provide assistance and what the procedures might be and whether we could do something of that amount within our budget. So Mr. Rogers, could you comment?
So if, if that's council's direction, we can absolutely bring some information back to outline a program that would help retailers, restaurants and businesses throughout the community with some financial support. And we could, we could develop a framework. Obviously, there's sort of an almost endless ways, number of ways to spend money, but things related to, you know, adaptation. In other words, changes to people's operations to keep customers or employees safe. So that would involve, you know, everything from one extreme tense for outdoor eating down to Plexiglas shields or changes to a business that would ultimately be able to, to protect their workers or their customers better with changes they've made. Some sort of cost sharing involved in that between the business and the city so that we would reinforce appropriate spending, but not create an incentive to buy things that were less than essential on that. We can take a look at giving you some options or a recommendation on sort of minimum business size and maximum business size. Obviously, even with a fairly significant amount of resources, one enormous multinational corporation could sort of use all of that money. That's probably not your intent. We'd be probably focusing more at the small end of the range, but maybe not the single proprietorship. So with the council's direction, your staff could come back with some analysis and also ability to sort of see from, with our current financial capacity, what the impact of, of spending dollars in that range would be. Is that the?
I'm just going to say is that the question is, is it feasible for you to do that within two weeks? And then maybe at this point, we could see if there's enough heads to nod to let you go forward on that, because I do believe these things are time, very time critical.
Sure. The normal answer to your question would be absolutely not. The, the council, the, the council production for your next agenda is actually almost complete at this particular point. Staff reports have already been written. In this case, you do note, we are in the middle of a pandemic for something like this. What we can get you back is an outline with your packet and then more information available by your meeting. That is not ideal. I understand that. But at least would give you enough information to have, I think, an informed discussion. And then we could at least determine what you want to do as a, as a policy direction and what issues would you want to have addressed? So the really long answer to that is it, it won't be as complete as a program that you gave us several months to work on, but we can get you something back at your next meeting.
And, and I think the other thing I understand is that this kind of thing is within your purview, given the emergency powers you have, but it's always good to check in with us. And so it's, again, it's this emergency situation and the need to act swiftly. And so, so I do hope that the other council members would ask you to come back with something that we could talk about under the agenda item that we have as a standing agenda item of when you report out.
Where do we end up here? Are you finished, Mr. Roberts? Are you finished?
So the only item there is we probably would want to at least put some, some agenda language there so that people do have, wish to sort of weigh in from a policy standpoint with you all that there, it's clear that that item would come up. So we can work to do that. We can get a very short framework of a staff report back to you and then some further recommendations by the time your next meeting rolls around in two weeks. If it seems like there's concurrence from the council that you'd like us to do that level of analysis?
Just a little something on matters for consideration and then look for a direction, come back from the council.
Very good.
Okay. Looks like as I see heads nodding, yes. Okay. So we're done with 6.01. Moving on to 6.02.
Wait, wait. Can, can we come back to my, I, I was hoping we, we, what I suggested got preempted, which is great. It was a, I think what Vice Mayor Warner said was really important. But I would like to ask that we think about ways that we can, we as a council can communicate and either by letter, by video or both to the community.
Well, Councilmember Monroe, you put out a letter to the community and you've been very engaged on Nextdoor. Every single day, Stephanie Agidio puts out updates both on our Facebook and out on Nextdoor and several different media platforms. So there, there's a lot of information going out there.
I, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I mean, I did put the letter, it really did come, it was heartfelt from me as an individual. I think it's a difference when it comes from the council as a whole and I'm suggesting that we hear that difference.
Okay. So in other words, redo the video that we did previously? We could re-release that. We could re-release that video.
We, we can. I, I, I guess I'm hearing that, that that's not something that was of interest. I mean, I guess my, my point is, as I thought about our communication, we're coming up on six months. In fact, this is, you know, we, what was it, the 13th of March? It's, it's going to be the 13th of August very shortly. That video was done, I think, two months in. We're in a very different place right now. And I, I think it's probably worth redoing some of that.
And so we, we heard from someone tonight that, that doesn't, that there's, cases going up means nothing. So every single day I am inundated with COVID-19 data. And I think all of us, as deep as you want to go, you can get more data. We've got signs all over our downtown about COVID-19. You can't go anywhere without being overwhelmed with the information. So, yeah, we could continue to do more videos. It's just that we're going, I'm getting complaints that there's too much information out there. So, yeah, there's got to be a balance. And I said, the only thing I've gotten more complaints about of not enough information is complaints of too much information. So Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what Trish has in mind, but I think it's worth thinking about it. Maybe we don't make a decision tonight, but again, I, I think I've said this before is people get information in a host of different ways. And the more we've, the more opportunities, the more options we create for getting information out, I think, the better. I mean, I don't know what, what kind of video Trish has in mind, but I mean, I'm, I'd be worth, I'd be willing to participate in something if somebody proposes something specific.
Well, we could tap into League of California Cities, just did a video. In fact, I'm on it. But League of California Cities have all, probably 20 mayors from around the state getting information about COVID-19 and what we need to do to reopen. So maybe we could get that video and, and post that as well using, as, as Councilmember Carling pointed out, there's a lot of different ways to get information. Some people by video, some people reading. There are multiple platforms of social media. I do not tweet. I know some folks that do. I know some folks that do. But we have four different social media platforms that we use to get information out. You and I both, the Councilman Monroe, are spending too much time on Nextdoor, but that's just kind of what we do. So.
Not my platform of choice.
Yeah, but it's, but it's better than ransom rates. So it's platforms where we need to get the information out. And I think that that's, yeah, the more efficient we can get out. But there again, as we've seen tonight, people can get the information and, and not accept it. So that's, that's kind of the balance. But I'm all in favor of getting information out to people. But we need to make sure that, that, that they're taking that information in.
Sure, I agree with you about, I mean, yeah, I mean, if, on the comments about 6.01, we had one person that was pretty adamant about not wearing a mask, doesn't believe in the science and so on. But everybody else supported wearing a mask. And so, yeah, we always have those outliers. I think your idea of posting the League of California Cities is an excellent one. Why not do that? I think that'd be great. I mean, it's no particular extra effort. Once it's done, just putting it up on the website is pretty simple, I would imagine.
Okay, we can contact, contact Sam Cagill and see if we can repost that.
Perfect.
Okay.
So I, neither of those actually, I think that's a great idea. But I wasn't actually talking about redoing the video. I mean, I think that's one option. It is simply a joint communication from, that's, you know, that's standing communication, which could be video, it could be a letter, it could be, I actually can't think of anything else but those two things. It is a standalone piece. But then the second piece is, I think that it makes a difference to have a place and a time where this not, Nextdoor, or Livermore Rants and Raves, or, you know, any of the social media sites, which are not accessible to everyone. But, you know, but some kind of a regular, I want to say town hall. We used to do the farmer's market booths. We cannot do that at this point. But I'm talking about something that is a kind of recreation of that specifically around COVID, but it doesn't have to be. I mean, we have lost the opportunity to actually in 3D, talk to the residents of, of the community. I think that we should find a way to do that in 2D. And that's, that's, you know, this specific issue, I think, needs to be continually addressed, but it doesn't just have to be this, that continual, you know, this issue as well.
Yeah, well, for example, you know, tonight, every, you know, second and fourth of Monday, the council comes together and discusses issues that are important to the community. We have 43 attendees. I attended several of those virtual farmer's market events. And if I talked to 10 people, that was a very, very busy evening. So it's, it's how to find the right platform and the right way to get the information out that's time efficient. I think that's going to be critical. It's because, as Councilmember Carling pointed out, everybody has their own mediums that they, they go through, their social media platforms, and they want the information immediately. They want it now. They don't want to have to wade through a bunch because they don't want to read through a lot. So how do you, you know, I think that maybe drafting another community letter like we did before, I think that was, that went well. So let, let's, let's work with staff right now and, and we can, we can publish another community letter. We can put that on our Nextdoor and through our usual media platforms. And let's, let's start with that. Let's start with another letter. Okay, looks like we've got some agreement on that. Well, we can work with the city manager and the city manager's office to, to crank out another letter.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Certainly. Okay. Okay, now, moving on to 6.02. And that is the, an order from the Director of Emergency Services providing temporary relief to the Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center. They have operating provisions that are required in sublease. And unfortunately, because of the orders from the state and the county, they can't abide, they can't follow those, those elements in the agreement. So with that, I will hand it over to the city manager.
Good evening. It's your city manager, Mark Roberts, and your Director of Emergency Services. This evening, I'm going to have Christine Martin give us a very quick run through of this particular order that we are asking the city council to ratify this evening. Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening, Mayor Marshawn and members of the city council. I'm Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. And I'll just add a few words to what Mayor Marshawn already did to introduce this item. The Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center does have a sublease and operating agreement with the city of Livermore covering terms and conditions for operating the Bankhead Theater. The agreement requires LV PAC to use the Bankhead a minimum number of days and to produce performances for the public. Under the current shelter in place restrictions related to the COVID-19 pandemic, LV PAC has been required to close the Bankhead for all public and private events and cannot meet the minimum requirements in the agreement. Therefore, on July 20th, the Director of Emergency Services signed Order Number 20-6, which provides temporary relief to LV, LV PAC from those specific operational provisions. LV PAC will have up to 90 days after the termination of the local emergency to resume operations. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution ratifying the Director of Emergency Services order and staff is available for any questions you have this evening.
Okay, any questions for, okay, I see no hands raised. I'm going to open the public comment period. I see that Chris Carter, the executive director for LV PAC is here. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Coming in loud and clear.
Okay, thank you. No, I'd be happy to and just want to thank you for considering this. And just to remind everybody, on March 12th is when we officially closed, is when the Governor Newsom had the mandate of no events for people, for groups more than 250 people. And so we had an event that night and that was the first night that we've closed. According to the sublease agreement, we're required to have at least 100, be open for 100 days out of the year. Yet we're right around 60, a little over 60 days when that order came out and we decided to close for the safety of the community. And then the shelter in place came in just a few days later. But we're hanging in there, so I just want to let you know that. It's, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to, to answer those.
Well, well, thank you and recognize, everybody on the council recognized was an absolute, what an absolute gem the, the Bankhead Theater is and the wonderful programming that you put out. And it just seems kind of unfair to require you to put on performances when the state prohibits it. So that's why this is, is coming forward to, to make sure that when this is all over, that once again, we can all go back to the Bankhead and enjoy the wonderful programming that, that we've seen there. Is there any other public comment, Madam City Clerk?
No comments have been received.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Any comments from the council?
Well. I think it's just a no-brainer that we need to support the LV PAC. And I, this is, I, I don't know how we could, you know, we have to do it administratively for sure. And that is fine, as far as I'm concerned, because I, it's a gem that we don't want to lose, take a chance on losing everything.
Right, is that a motion?
I can make a motion, how about that?
Why would you make a motion? We'll call it, we'll call it good. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Coomer, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye. Okay, well, we're just about nine o'clock. Usually, the council likes to take a short break about this point. Or we can forge ahead to 6.03, which is the Community Services and Infrastructure Report. What's the pleasure of the council? Looks like everybody wants to keep going. In that case, great, we'll keep going. 6.03. Mr. Spence. Or not?
You've got Mr. Spence away from his mic.